...in 2018, we will call for the city council meeting for a city of spaceport. Uh, we would like to have our dedication played in the region's five councils with John Greaves.
Lord, thank you for having us here today. Uh, please bless us with your wisdom and uh, and smartness to do other things that are pleasing in your eyes. Uh, please be with those folks who have, uh, who have lost those, uh, in the past few days. Uh, be with those who may be going through trouble and then you have to many days. Uh, please be with those men and women, uh, who take this daily, uh, abroad and here at home. In your name we pray.
I take the lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being just as well.
Okay, uh, we're gonna move down to agenda item three. This is a recognition of public presentation. Uh, we want to recognize our Small Business Saturday with proclamation by the city, uh, and the proclamation reads as follows. A proclamation by the mayor and city council of City of Spaceport Small Business Saturday, whereas the government of the City of Spaceport, Georgia celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently thirty point two million small businesses in the United States. It represents ninety nine point seven of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for sixty five point nine percent of net new job creation from two thousand to two thousand seventeen. And whereas, small business employs forty seven point five percent of employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas ninety percent of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community. And whereas eighty nine percent of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday say that they encourage them to shop small all year long. And whereas seventy three percent of consumers who reportedly shop small in independently owned weetos and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family. And whereas, the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small independently owned businesses was to support their community. Where and whereas, the City of Spaceport, Georgia supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups, well, and public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Jonathan McCollum, Mayor of the City of Spaceport, Georgia, do hereby proclaim, November twenty fourth, two thousand eighteen, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small business and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Thank you. Small Business Saturday. All right, we'll move on to agenda item, uh, three B, which is a presentation by Joe Tanner and Associates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Pro-Tan, members of the council. Uh, my name is Jerry Keen. I'm here with, uh, Mr. Eric Bailey and, uh, Mr. Scott Tanner, representing Joe Tanner and Associates of Governmental Affairs Firm out of Atlanta that's over twenty years old. I've listed our bios and our background in your folder. I might as well take all the time, but, uh, I do want to point that our founder and chairman, Joe Tanner, served as state and every governor since Carter, all the way through this governor and a number of roles, including twice as then our commissioner, labor commissioner, and his advisor and confidential advisor to many, many governors as far as and many of our federal elected officials. Our role with Joe Tanner and Associates is to represent numerous interests around the state and state capital and state agencies. Uh, we have an array of qualified and experienced individuals. We have a former EPD director for sixteen years for water quality management, former office of planning and budget director on staff, uh, besides the two behind me. I served in the House for many years, my last six as House Majority Leader, served with, uh, Bob Lane, served with, uh, John Burns, and certainly served, uh, with my good friend Jack Hill in the Senate. Our goal is to work with you as we do many other times and interacting with agencies. State governments become very large, very complex, and the names and the faces change a lot quicker than they used to, in particular when I was up there. And while you're a member of the GMA Georgia Municipal Association, as we are, we're a member of the same organization, our goal would be to be your eyes and ears at the state capital every day. There are many unintended consequences that happens up there, and having someone looking after your interests, not only on a legislative front, but a budget front, but we're about to have a whole new, probably a whole new, uh, group of agency head and commissioners. And it's important that you have a continuing and working relationship, and as many of our larger or state cities like Statesport have, they have their own firms engaged directly up there to interact with them. Uh, we've left some information, I know, with our city, with your city manager and the mayor, uh, but with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll answer any questions, or I don't want to take a lot of your time. I know you've got a big agenda tonight.
And what we want to be, what the question I want to get answered, I want us to be clear on, is that the services that you provide, uh, are we seeing other cities across the ci- uh, across our state in particular, uh, use your services to holster resources within their community?
Yes, not only cities and counties across there, but, uh, almost every large city or county has some type of governmental affairs. Now, they don't all have us, yes, they did, uh, but they have someone up there watching the cause of the complexity of the process up there now. The budget's grown from the time I first came there now to where it's over twenty eight million dollars a year, or billion, excuse me. That's a, that's a big budget. Our agencies have grown, uh, the oversight has grown. I mean, just in permitting and environmental issues, we're the only governmental affairs firm that I'm aware of in the state that brings that type of experience, uh, to local governments to help them with permitting. We've worked with many, many of our public utility, uh, companies as well to help them with that, and, um, environmental issues continue to always be a, a tough issue for cities and counties that we can bring that, as well as budgetary items. Uh, certainly having Senator Hill, and his role is a great asset for your city, um, but, uh, you know, having your eyes and ears there on a daily basis, working with that, getting your delegation together regularly up there for meetings, interacting with not only you folks, but also chief policymakers up there outside of their own legislative jungle.
Okay, and I know that we are in the midst of doing the transit study right now. Uh, what would your role be, uh, if, if the study comes back and says that we're a city that would be benefited by public transportation? How could you level us as far as garnering resources as related to that, or any other item that we may be faced with moving forward?
Uh, well, anytime you talk about transit, you're talking about funding.
Yes.
And that's a critical, critical component of any, any transit. The first thing I would recommend is that, uh, you would sit and talk with the planning director of DOT, Mr. Jay Roberts. Jay served with me in the House, uh, he's a close friend, and even though he's a state DOT, I think he'd be a great resource for you guys in helping to, uh, identify not only some state funding, potential federal funding as well depending on. I, I'm not familiar with what you're trying to do, but if it's a public transportation system that would cover the city, then there would be some, some both federal and state monies that potentially would be available. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if it would require any local legislation without seeing what you're trying to do, certainly working with your local delegation to advocate for that.
Okay, and is that something that you and your firm will be able to coordinate?
Yes, sir. We have a great relationship with DOT. So, the planning director and I are, uh, we're close friends, and I was there as Majority Leader when he was made Transportation Chair, and I'm the Planning Director. Uh, both, uh, Scott Tanner and Eric Bailey, I have great relationships with the commissioner and the board, and we, we would be very happy to interact with them.
And can you give me another example, uh, area that, I mean, this apparently like the City of Spaceport could best fit from, uh, your services?
Well, we've been working down in Camden County. I'm from the coastline. I'm from Clinton County, right behind that for years. We've been working down in Cam- Camden County on their issue down there, not only the development of the spaceport potentially down there for several years, but also other, other issues. They had, I'll give you an example recently, uh, well, we've got one we're working on now to, to put up a cell tower, uh, but it's in a historical area, so we're working with historical permission to get a waiver to get that done. Uh, they had some issues with funding of a local road project down there that was still a lot on the list, and we got that moved up to get some, uh, to get some approval from DOT for that. Our primary function with them right now is the spaceport development, as it's a huge economic development impact, creates a lot of jobs, uh, as well, and we've done some work, obviously, in Clinton County as well.
All right, thank you. Uh, council, if there are any questions, uh, you may have in regards to this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. All right, uh, we'll move down to agenda item four, public comments. Do we have any more inside up for public comments? Okay, we move down to agenda item five. This is, this is a consideration of a motion to approve consent agenda, which includes approval minutes for meeting on eleven six council minutes, uh, and then the eleven thirteen, uh, council work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we move down to agenda item six, uh, which is the second reading of the consideration of a motion to approve orders twenty eighteen dash oh nine, orders admitting Article Two, Section Two of the City of Spaceport Co-ordinances to establish the Spaceport Commission on Diversity and Inclusion pursuant to City Charter Three Dash Seven. Okay?
Mayor, council, this is brought to force again for, um, consideration. Um, this would be an ordinance revision in Article Two, which is authorities, boards, and commissions, and this would be the establishment of the, um, of the committee commission on diversity and inclusion, and it consists of eight members, eight members who are public county residents, and they'd be, uh, have a term of two years, and that initial term would end at the end of September of twenty twenty, and it says the initial members have been appointed at time and shall hold office until the balance of their term, and then the vacancies, um, shall be filled by interim appointment by mayor and council, and then the mayor and council will have the authority to convene a member of the commission by majority vote, and mayor and council with consultation with the commission may appoint non-voting official members to commission provide mission support or other sub- subject matter expertise, and then it says that they would, um, that they would create bylaws, and they would be, they would be subject to open, um, open meetings, Board of Open Meetings Act, and then the Department of the Authority would need to prepare studies and reports, strategies, education, educational programs for the presidency and the government body on policy matters relating to promoting diversity, inclusion, and equity among citizens in Statesport connected to issues of poverty and prosperity. And, uh, this will just be, um, fitting in those new sections into Article, um, into Article Two.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item seven. Um, would be the public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve for activation for alcohol license, section six, ten, five, uh, Dicken Blues Barbecue, uh, Restaurant, uh, with Karen O'Neil over in Central South Main Street. Um, was Frank, Frank, does any, consider any issues?
No issues.
Chief Bryant? Chief Bryant? All right, is there a turn?
No issues.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go across to the barbecue plate. Uh, we'll move down to agenda item eight, which is the public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve application five eighteen dash eighteen, uh, dash ten, dash oh one, Interplan LLC Requesting Variance from Article Ten, Section Ten Oh Three, uh, seek to reduce the required front yard setback order to allow construction of the Chick-fil-A restaurant on one point oh eight seven acres of property located at three fifty-two Northside Drive, and, uh, with the council's permission, I would like to consolidate, uh, eight, nine, eight and nine, they are both Chick-fil-A. All right, is there a motion to open the public hearing? All right, is there a second?
Sure.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Frank, if you will, would you give us some insight on this?
Yes, thank you. We're gonna have V eighteen ten oh one and V eighteen ten oh two at the same time presented. There's only variants requested for three fifty-two Northside Drive East Chick-fil-A and reconstruction. Location is three fifty-two Northside Drive East. They are requesting a variance from Article Ten, Section Ten Oh Three to reduce the minimal front yard setback, and a variant of Article Ten, Section Ten Oh Three H to reduce the minimal rear yard setback. The applicant is Interplan LLC, care of Robert Walker, and the owners are Stori Ventures LLC. This property is located on one point zero eight seven acres. The simply applicant is proposing the demolition of the existing three thousand six hundred thirty-eight square foot Chick-fil-A restaurant and the construction of a new four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight square foot Chick-fil-A restaurant at the same location. It will have dual approach, multi-lane drive-throughs to face-to-face canopy systems, as well as a meal delivery canopy system and a pickup window side of the building. In order to reconstruct a larger Chick-fil-A building at the same location, the applicant is requesting two variances in order to reduce the front and rear yard setbacks. Therefore, the applicant will put the following. Applicant V eighteen ten oh one is a variant from Article Ten, Section Ten Oh Three, seek to reduce the front yard setback from twenty-five feet to eighteen point six five feet. And number two, applicant V six, V eighteen ten oh two, a variant from Article Ten, Section Ten Oh Three H to reduce the rear yard setback from twenty-five feet to twenty-three point eight feet. And to, uh, direct your attention to the screens. Um, I think everyone knows where the Chick-fil-A is located on Northside Drive. You see the area up here highlighted, parking lot at the rear of the shopping center. Uh, looking up and down both directions, at the intersection, across the Longhorns, and to the rear of the property, towards the big parking lot at the rear of the shopping center. This is the, uh, property line here, with the new AT&T location, towards the AT&T Aspen Dental next door, and the mall across the street, and the Longhorns next door. Uh, this is the site plan of the proposed new Chick-fil-A, and you'll see highlighted in yellow where the setback encroachment will take place. Uh, and in fact, what they really are, are the new, um, permanent covered drive-through structure they're encroaching. Uh, some of you have been to some that have already had this renovation, but we talked about what we missed. Illustrations here show this will be the new side elevations on the front, the rear and entry, I'm sorry, elevations of the, the slide, and the two sides. And you'll see the color samples there on the side as well. This is what the, um, drive-through permanent structure will look like. And you'll see just little illustrations of how that functions. And in fact, really, this is what they'll put for actually, like with the two posts here. And again, how that system works. Staff did have a chance to review the request and did recommend approval of both V eighteen ten oh one and V eighteen ten oh two. And the regularly scheduled meeting held Tuesday, November sixth, two thousand eighteen, at five p.m. on the planning commission, both six oh, to approve both applications of V eighteen ten oh one and V eighteen ten oh two. And I think we have some thumbs here for representing Chick-fil-A that we might want to skip around.
Is there anyone here to speak for?
Hey, I'm Joseph Lightwell from Chick-fil-A. So, I'm the design engineer that helped, uh, put all this together. So, I'm here to help answer any questions. Our main goal here is to try to make it better for our customers, so we can sell them chicken. So, this, this new layout for the, um, for the restaurant will actually make it a lot quicker to get on and off the site. We'll have other campaigns outside to protect the team members as they're outside taking orders. We'll have, there'll be fans and lights and heaters outside, so they'll be able to be outside and be more comfortable on the taking orders. And then for drive-through windows, we'll have people that'll be able to deliver meals upstream so that if someone decides that they want a milkshake and other people are waiting behind them, then when that first person leaves, two or three people can leave. So, it'll just help things drive, get a lot quicker. So, that's really what the candidates here for. But we're looking forward to doing this and making it even better for our customers.
Thank you. Uh, just for a second, please, is there anyone here to speak up against for Chick-fil-A? I don't see it. There is none. Uh, is there a motion to, um, close the public hearing?
Certainly.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, or council?
Frank, where the, it's, it's hard to see even if you blow it up. What are those two yellow marks there?
Those, that's the setback where they're encroaching. Those are where they're, they're asking for the variance.
And then what is that, you know, a hatched area right there at the, at the intersection? Is this kind of a turning lane or?
Got a bottom?
Uh, I'm kind of in the bottom corner there. There's two yellow marks. One of them's...
Yeah, oh, that's just striding on a little road.
Okay. It was hard to tell. And they are gonna be required to put a sidewalk in there?
Yes. You'll see that highlighted. That's the, the other shaded area going all the way down the boundary there. And that will tie to the new AT&T.
So, leave it short.
Will this design change, and will it continue to stand in place?
Not at all.
All right. We really can't touch it.
All right, um, we don't even have...
Is this design model exist any word prior to this location?
Yes, we've, uh, been building this one for about a year and a half or two years. We don't, I don't think that we have one that's very close to here, um, but we do have several of these models out there.
Is this model, uh, please? This model that you're presenting to us in planning, was it constrained by any of your current sites, or is this the model as you're currently enjoying in location?
Um, this is the same prototype that we're using in several other locations. Um, we did have to use one of our, um, one of our models that wasn't quite as long in case the property is a little bit more rectangular versus square. So, we did, this is one that's specifically designed to fit into kind of a more, uh, shallower type piece of property.
So, do you feel like with your peak rush time, your cue for getting, I mean, your drive-through this very happens, and you can tell us about that? I've seen that in several other locations.
Right.
Wonderful. But you feel like that will, I mean, we've got a very congested traffic area there.
Absolutely. This is gonna be worlds better. Because if you notice, um, on the right-hand side of the drawing, where right now we've got the entrance and exit, uh, that's gonna be shut off, and that's where a lot of people try to dive into the dark drive-throughs from that side. Um, the building's gonna be pushed all the way over to the property line, which will make the drive-through line a lot longer. And if you notice too, the drive-throughs actually want to go all the way across from the roof frontage. So, you'll be able to fit, right now you might be able to fit twelve to thirteen cars, uh, from the work point around to the one day. This will be able to fit like twenty-four or twenty-five cars in there before it starts backing out. And there'll actually be probably about thirteen cars before it backs out into the shopping center behind it. So, I think it's gonna be much, much better.
Is there any further discussion, my council? All right, uh, seeing that there's no further discussion, is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
All right, we have a second.
Frank, are there any conditions?
No conditions, but if you would, um, approve both.
Yeah, I was gonna make a statement. As a point of clarity, this motion to approve is for agenda items eight and nine. We have a first, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Agenda item eighty-nine is passed. We'll move down to agenda item ten. This is a public hearing to announce the start of the city's comprehensive planning process. This is the first required public hearing notice that's required by the state in the comprehensive planning process. Uh, is there a motion to open the public hearing? All right, is there a second?
Certainly.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Frank, if you will?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This is the first public required hearing to officially announce the start of the city's comprehensive planning process. Uh, this is required for our ten-year annual update of our comprehensive plan. Uh, and basically, the purpose of this is to encourage public participation, um, and we will really encourage citizens to get involved in this process through a variety of methods, and to include a number of public input meetings. We will have surveys, and you will also have the opportunity, citizens to drop by and give us written comments, or any type of statements they would like to in our office during normal business hours. We will, um, be publicizing the upcoming dates and when the survey will be available, and we'll be publicizing that through a variety of, um, means, both in the newspaper and the television, similar to the same process we use for the GICU planning process, which we had great participation, um, for it. I would like to say we have established a steering committee, and I want to make sure those folks are recognized and also to let folks know they can contact those participants to, uh, let their voice be heard as well. Uh, but the steering committee is made up, a lot of these appointments are state-required appointments that represent economic development, and that's why a lot of these folks from this committee, they're representatives of the community. They include Alan Woldro, who's director of downtown Spaceport Development Authority, Cindy Steinman, who is a management analyst representing public county, Benji Thompson, who is the executive director of the Spaceport Development Authority, Ben McCain, who is the business manager for the Business Innovation Group for Georgia Southern University. He's also a member of the planning commission. Mr. James Byrd Senior, who is the chair of the City of Stateful Planning Commission. Mr. Jamie Grady, who is the CEO of Avery Center for the Arts. Ms. Phyllis Thompson, who is the president of the Spaceport Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Denise Michael, who is the president of the Realtors Association. And Mr. Steve Price, who is a board member of Transportation, along with our elected officials who are also members of that committee. So, we feel like we've got a broad spectrum of representation in the committee, and we hope to have a heavy participation from the citizens that are, folks know that their voices are important, and we want to hear from them. So, again, we will hold up to three public input meetings throughout the community, and again, we'll advertise those and publicize those, and we'll get some good participation, along with this, I think, that'll be online and in a paper online.
Thank you.
I just have a question too, because, so this has to be done and completed into the state by?
June.
So...
We'll, we'll be having a public input meeting probably anywhere after the holidays.
Thank you. All right, um, is there anybody here to speak for? Anybody here to speak against? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Certainly.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any council discussion in regards to the comprehensive plan?
Frank, once we, uh, get the dates finalized and you get the survey, you know, the whole block then, all that kind of thing, the best way to reach everybody in the city is, uh, water bills. Is there a way we can get that into water?
That is gonna be one of the methods we're gonna investigate. Actually, that's one recommended by the state. I just came back from Athens last week regarding the state comprehensive planning environments, and that's one of the recommendations they've used. So, we're gonna look at a variety of methods, and that's one of them, yes.
Good way to reach those people that don't have social media or answer cable.
Uh, is there anyone else from council that has any further discussion in regards to comprehensive plan?
I know this is a huge undertaking, and you guys, very run of, uh, of work on this, will say thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for, thank you for, uh...
And I, and I should say, it is truly a citywide, it's a, it's not department-wide, or like a physical, I mean, it's comprehensive, everyone. You know, we're gonna do a lot of the groundwork, so I think everybody's participation makes it.
That's one thing that we do want to make clear, and the more voices that we have in this, the better. Um, the better idea will know specifically what citizens are doing.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Frank. Um, did we close that out?
We did.
Okay, good, you will. No further discussion, my council. Is there a motion to approve?
I would say we have, totally think we have a big group.
Uh, ask, ask council for a motion to vote, no? On my end. But, but listen, hey, I'm all the way to the suicide. So, right as I leave. Okay, all right. So, we'll move down to agenda item eleven, which is a, a public hearing first reading orders twenty eighteen dash thirteen, or orders admitting chapter six, um, to allow Sunday sale of alcohol to begin at eleven a.m. Um, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Certainly.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Frank Kane, if you will, share some light on this, folks? Frank Kane, if you will, share some light on this for us.
Mayor, council, this is, this is what's colloquially known as the Brunch Bill. This is, this follows Senate Bill seventeen, which amended Georgia Code section three through seven. In the November sixth, two thousand and eighteen ballot, there was a local referendum that was to allow the city-states for to allow restaurant sales at restaurants, or alcohol sales at restaurants commencing at eleven a.m. So what this would do is it would amend chapter six, seven of, section six, seven of our alcohol ordinance specifically in two, which currently allows home premises sales at restaurants to commence at twelve-thirty p.m. But this would allow those Sunday sales to commence at eleven a.m. It would not affect anything regarding package sales, or any sort of, anything, any restaurant, any home premises consumption, not considered a restaurant under Georgia Code. So basically, this would just allow the sales to begin at eleven a.m. on Sunday at restaurants following the authorization of Stateful Citizens on that amendment number six ballot.
All right, thank you, Jay. Is there anyone to speak for? There requires, either one here to speak against? All right, seeing that there's no for or against, is there a motion to close here? Wait a second.
Second.
All right, is there any council discussion? Oh, excuse me, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Is there any council discussion? No? Seeing that there's no council discussion, is there a motion to approve?
Aye.
My bad. My bad. All right, I want to make, we want to do this thing, all right. We move to agenda item twelve, a public hearing first reading for ordinance twenty-eighteen dash fourteen, or ordinance to amend chapter fifty-eight offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Code of the City of Stateful Georgia to provide penalties for possession of marijuana to repeal all ordinances in conflict here with and for other purposes. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Kane, if all of us in favor?
Aye.
Kane, if you will.
Mayor, council, this is a, this is the first reading of public hearing of a resolution that would amend chapter fifty-eight of the Municipal Code, which is our fifth miscellaneous provision. Mainly, it would allow a local option ordinance for possession of marijuana under section fifty-eight twelve. And that would be, that shall be unlawful for any person to possess one ounce or less of marijuana within the corporate limits of the City of Stateful. Any person found guilty of violating the section shall be punished by a fine not to exceed five hundred dollars. Where the court finds the defendant is without the financial means to pay a fine, the court may direct the defendant to perform community service commissary with the fine that otherwise be imposed. Know that shall any person who commits a marijuana possession pursuant to this section be punished by imprisonment for any term. Any defendant charged hereunder with possession of one ounce or less of marijuana shall be entitled on request to have the case against the defendant transferred to the court having general misdemeanor jurisdiction in Bullard County.
Thank you, Jay. Is there anyone here to speak for? Is there anyone here to speak against? All right, seeing that there is no motion to give or against, is there a motion to close?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion by council? All right, we move on to agenda item thirteen. This is a public hearing first reading for ordinance twenty-eighteen dash fifteen, or ordinance of chapter two, new self-stationed law presentation council meeting, agenda items to revise Stateful Code ordinances. Is there a motion to open?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, council, this is a, this is a proposal to amend chapter two administration of the city code ordinance. Mainly, it would add in section two, two, period four. And the proposed revisions to the code of ordinance shall draw up the agenda item regular scheduled council meetings or during other business. First requesting the revision shall provide an explanation reason for making the proposed revision, mayor council. Suggestions for revision shall only be made by mayor council or state staff. Any citizen or outside organization wishing to suggest a revision shall contact their council representative or the mayor who may sponsor that intervention for mayor council. And the firm of voters, the majority of form of mayor councils shall immediately order the revision forward with the direction of the city attorney draft, proposed revision language. Best to do so shall be taken to court with the existing standard voting guidelines outlined in the city charter. Then the city attorney shall then prepare a draft of the revision. In the case of a proposed revision to existing ordinance, the city attorney shall prepare a document that clearly shows the existing ordinance and any proposed conditions, revisions, or deletions in a comprehensive manner on single page. If intent to proceed under subsection B has been properly made, the city attorney may present a subject layer preliminary revision or regularly scheduled council meeting in order to facilitate discussion and input from mayor council. A preliminary revision shall not be considered perpassive by mayor council. A public hearing on proposed revision may only be allowed on motion by mayor council that's not required. And once the city attorney has substantially prepared the proposed ordinance revision, it should be presented as a first reading of public hearing and shall be run according to standard charts and guidelines. Mayor council may vote the affirmative to approve the ordinance as then presented or with only minor modifications for the second reading. Substantial changes made to revision presented in the first reading shall require a modified revision to be presented as a first reading in subsequent council meeting. The second reading, the mayor council may make or approve or deny the revision as presented as is presented in the above three eventable agenda. Governor's errors may be corrected when a substantive modifications to the proposed revision shall be presented.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone to speak for? Is there anyone to speak against? Seeing that there's nobody to speak for or against, is there a motion to close here?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there any council discussion? Seeing that there is none, we move on to agenda item fourteen. This is consideration of a motion to approve, to approve a war contract with Robert Struck Center and the amount of funds of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and five cents for the purchase of a jump street on the street street.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Jason Mulls, Director of Federal Engineering. On October thirtieth, the city's Stateful received sealed bids for a purchase of a denture truck street. We received five bids and a low bid, which was from Robert Struck Center, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine eleven cents. All items submitted with the bid are in accordance with city standards and specifications. And this item will be paid for, I think, to loss, as noted. And replaces a nineteen-seventy-nine denture that apparently had abuse. And will be repaid back for you later for surplus. I'll be keeping that.
All right, you can, you can just put the seven now?
Yeah.
I know, right?
I'll take any questions.
All right, good deal. All right, is there any... Are there any questions, oh, by council? We discussed this.
Nope.
I got no, right? Is that consideration of a motion to approve?
Aye.
All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jason.
Can squeeze one more here.
All right, we move on to agenda item fifteen. This is consideration of a motion to award a contract and the amount seventy-three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to see a new pipeline for the installation of thirty-one foot of core H gas main with the funds approved for the twenty-eighteen, the closing item. NGD dash sixty-five, Steve.
Mayor, council, this is an item we've had in our vision for a couple of years. And it's to extend gas service out the riverbed road with the new developments that have been approved and the destruction that's going on out there. To let the construction main in that area where we can market to those new potential customers as they come along. You know, gas is a little different, and we have to kind of speculate and put our gas lines out there. Get them in the area and then work out the customers and try to get them in. And this will allow us to, you know, start marketing and get this first customer. We feel like over the years that will pay off. It is, it was approved money in our capital improvements budget plan. We got two bids submitted, and the low bid was under our budget amount. You can see a detail to the map with that item. It shows us about the starts at Kwanah Road and ends just past the New Windward South subdivision is being built on the opposite side of the road from that subdivision. Glad to answer your question.
Any questions by council?
Steve, were you surprised there were only two bids?
No. Every once in a while, we were sweating that we got two. We had to work hard and make sure we had two. But the bids were good and were under budget, we were very pleased with the price.
Thank you, Steve. Any further question, any further question by council? Seeing that there is none, is there a motion to approve?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, that shows that agenda item fifteen has passed. We move on to agenda item sixteen, although it was due. Consideration of a motion to approve the design bid and construction of approximately fifteen hundred feet, fifteen inches of gravity sewers serve the Windward South subdivision and future development on the SNS railroad bid. Our bid goal in the amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the funds for the approved CIP budget.
Mayor, council, once again, this is in the same area, the SNS railroad bid. As you know, a few months ago, we brought a similar project to you where the new cross-did is going to extend the master sewer line, trunk line, to serve that area. We need to cross these pieces of property, these parcels as they're developed. These funds to extend these lines are not for lines internal to the subdivision. These lines will follow the edge of the wetlands and will connect one parcel to the next parcel. It's possibly fifteen hundred feet, fifteen inch sewer. It has been, most of the design has already been done by us to get there in the past. So really, all we've got to do is pull those old planes off the shelf, revise them a little bit, get them out of bid, and then we'll bring the bids back to y'all for approval later before construction starts.
Any discussion by council? Is there a motion to approve?
Aye.
Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
That shows that agenda item sixteen has passed. We move on to agenda item seventeen, thanks, Steve. This is consideration of a motion to award a contract to equip this with a purchase. Police vehicles with safety equipment, West Chatham warning devices to the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-two cents. If approved, this question will be funded by the CIP PD dash one from the allocated funds provided by the recent monitor in Chief R. H.
I think, Mr. Mayor, council, you know, we came here a couple of months ago and asked for approvals of some funds to purchase vehicles. The amount was about five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We purchased eleven vehicles with that money for a little over three hundred and sixteen thousand and the remainder, about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand and change to get those cars outfitted. You can imagine cars that are getting very expensive to outfit. So we, last time we bought cars, we used West Chatham. We had great success with that company. It's a one-stop shop for us instead of shuttling cars to different places. We take them to one place, then we're taking the striping, installation of the lights, cages, camera system, all the things that go into it, and a modern patrol car. So we're able to get each of these eleven cars, we treat it a little bit differently depending on their mission, but it's about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-two cents. We're asking for approval to get those cars outfitted. I will have to come back to you one more time on this project because this is not including the computers that go with those cars. That comes from a different sole source provider, so we can get that separately approved. But we are, through the administrative services department, they were looking at the contract, we're feedbacking this price off of another government entity's bid process so that we can take the deal and do that.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, is there any discussion by council? All right, seeing that there is none, is there a motion to approve?
Aye.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
That shows that agenda item seventeen has passed. We move on to agenda item eighteen, consideration of a motion to award a contract to provide a health network and pharmacy services to Shaw Hankins Brokering, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Anthem. Our private terms and conditions required in the quest for proposals issued by the city of Stateful. If approved, this contract for Anthem will begin January one, twenty-nineteen, for a term of one year. The broker's contract with Shaw Hankins will be for one year term with an option to renew for two additional years on a year-to-year basis. In addition, staff will commence the day to be awarded a health and privacy contract for a one-year term, which will be about twelve thousand dollars. Mayor?
As the mayor stated, that will be our recommendation. And I guess I'll give a brief description of the process we got here and then leave questions, clarifications if they should have to. As the mayor stated, we went through the request for proposals, which is a process of evaluating submittals based on criteria, cost of being made from, and also service capabilities. In this process, we issue requests for proposals to all major markets of vibe in our area, such as United, Edna, IBG, and Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we receive those proposals back in. And I did want to stop in the other four people on the committee. Over the last three months, they've given a vast amount of time and effort in evaluating news and learning process. So thanks for that. With this process, we went through evaluations. We had the companies come in and do presentations, which we evaluated those. And at that point, you know, if anybody knows anything about health, the health industry is, it's a lot of tangible elements that you must nail down and try to analyze to come up with a couple of viable grids to evaluate the financial side. At that point, we felt second round of presentations were necessary and beneficial, obviously to council. But that was approximately a week and a half ago. And we had those presentations. Staff came together, made the final recommendation. We feel very confident in it. I can speak for myself, but I feel like I can speak for the other four as well. What this proposal is, is a lot of the health services for city employees, a lot of networks, facilities, and healthcare providers. And also, it provides a pharmacy for medications and all that. I guess with that being said, if you have any questions? I think the forms that you got in your bid package shows evaluations of the numbers based on projections of vehicle costs. I think there was some questions about our recommendation and whatnot. And I think you got the answers to those handed out to you earlier, I believe. And the responses, I believe, are good, right? With that, I'm available, as well as the other members of the team. Any questions for changing any areas of this process? With that, like any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any discussion by council?
A question reference to the, we just received this, one thing. Did you get a chance to raise yourself?
I did, I did.
Sure you did. And you, based on after reading that, you're still going to recommend an offense after reading that, that's the direction?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Another question, a reference to, I guess, Ben Davis and Associates. Did he also give a proposal? Did he give a, for the IFB?
We, in this process, we send out to, direct to the markets and strong, Ben Davis, who's our current broker, the service and evaluator or whatnot in the process.
Is there any further questions by council or discussion? All right. Seeing that there is, if there is none, is there a motion to approve?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right. Seeing that agenda item eighteen has passed. Is there any, for agenda item nineteen, is there any other business from city council? All right, city, are there any city managers, city managers, comments?
This is who has reported in the chief of council, Edward.
Yes, ma'am. Just wanted to, the council, mayor council, on a note, actually, they're going to add to our utility. Our gun options for citizens will be a one-eight-hundred number they can call in and pay their utility bill. So we've had some people call, so you have a president on pay, but you don't have that option. So they'll go through our power... So they'll go through our cloud software, they will handle, just about to do our online payments, and they keep the same, uh, they're dealing with a bill amount. So they're capable of handling the balance that's always a number coming through city.
Will it be a fee that's associated with that?
Two percent, just like it is if you went online and paid. And.
And two percent on top of the, will it be a credit card charge as well, or that's just?
That's the two, that's it. Just like it is online, you all, um, do the same.
And that's the only thing we pay to, uh, what we're already paying them for?
And we hope now this is something that they can go across.
Alright. Alright, thank you, Sue. We'll move to general item four two.
So we have, currently, if you know, we hire officers out off duty, we call it extranew work, and many local businesses will hire officers for security details, and they pay that through the city, but it's the direct pass-through, through the cities of the officers. And that's thirty dollars an hour, which is a rate that you set in this schedule of fees. Uh, we're not having good success with officers signing up for that recently because their overtime rates generally have exceeded thirty dollars an hour, they don't want to work at, at that rate, and so a lot of that extra duty is not being filled. Walmart, uh, is, is sort of desperately in need of officers for the holiday season, they like to put officers on to, you know, kind of control crowds, they include the store. Uh, and they've offered the officers fifty dollars an hour to come do that. Uh, we posted that to see if there was interest, and it all not filled up, so the officers who were interested in working, they didn't want to, but we can't allow them to do that, uh, without y'all's permission. And so all I'm asking for you guys to do is amend the schedule of fees specifically to this holiday season, Thanksgiving and Christmas, specifically for the business of Walmart, uh, so that they can hire those officers that can help.
Alright, and I think so much, we need to amend as to allow this for, for this particular time, because after the first of the year, we'll be bringing you the, the new fee schedule, which will have an increase, I don't want it to be quite that high, for the, an increased fee. But we just need to have this, so, so we're able to say that works.
And this thirty dollars an hour, uh, to fifty dollars an hour, paid all by Walmart?
Completely pass-through, and the other advantage that I want to make sure we're saying is that Walmart has a problem there, and they don't have our officers there on their dime. We're going to send officers there to fix those problems on our dime, so it really is, uh, to our benefit to have Walmart paying them to stand by in case there is a problem or two. And not many problems, after the rest, I will send officers off the street there and take care of issues when they have big crowds.
And, alright, not from sound either, can, is there any repercussions to doing this for a particular purpose as opposed to?
Yeah, I ask for that.
I, I think it should be, I think it should be uniform during this time period.
Alright, so can you verbalize the, uh, limit that we need to?
That, um, from, from the date of, um, November twenty of two thousand eighteen until December thirty-first of two thousand eighteen, the off-duty rate for Statesboro Police Department officer shall be fifty dollars an hour payable by the requesting, uh, business.
Alright, is there a motion?
A move.
A slide during, yeah. Um, is there any reason why we can't just set it fifty or sixty and then, then they can pay up to that? In other words, instead of setting a fixed rate, you know, maybe Walmart needs it at the holidays for fifty, but somebody else offered forty, you know, soon, soon they'll get it. Or no, does something, we gotta have a seventy?
No, we have, we have codes, and it would be payroll, because all this runs through payroll.
Okay.
Alright, so do I have a motion to approve the claims there? Is there a second? All of them in favor? Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you, John.
Sure.
Public comments, is there anyone here that would like to make any public comments?
Mayor and council, good evening, thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. As I've addressed you guys many, many times before, I tend to ramble for, for very little substance, so I would not do that. I did want to, uh, before I get started, uh, thank you for the indication and asking. I don't know if any of you remember Derek Bailey, used to work at this department here. Uh, he was shot and wounded very bad, and I've got his name this week. You know, the police have him in prayers. He's a good man, he's a good Statesboro citizen, he's been off defending our country for about twenty years. I want to start off with saying, much to a lot of people's surprise, I'm okay with the recommendation at this point. Jonathan and I talked earlier, um, it's gonna, it's gonna be okay. I do want to start off by saying, and kind of piggyback off of Darren, I can't tell you the quality of people that you have in your leadership, you know, on this particular selection committee. What they did, who they are, uh, the amount of time they put into it. They don't do math like I do math, but, uh, that doesn't, that doesn't have anything to do with it. I don't agree with everything they came up with, I come from a different slant, I've been doing this for thirty years, uh, I take things a little different, uh, we'll see how that works out. I gave them my best advice, I can tell you they gave you the best answer they thought they could come up with, with the ability and the information they had. So I want you at least to know that the intent, uh, was pronounced by every one of them. I did not have a chance to address in any manner the city as the broker, uh, so, so I didn't want to do that. If you bear with me, a couple of pages and a couple of facts that I think should be extrapolated from the process. Primarily, at this point, I hope everybody knows, I've been around the insurance for the city of Statesboro for a long time, the city's best interest or, or at my heart, and I think not many people would question that. I do want to learn from this, I do want the city to improve from this, um, and, and I do want the city to look better at a later moment from this. So I'm going to read what I have to read, excuse me for being boring. Several months ago, uh, my partner stood in front of this council and addressed some of the concerns with the health insurance. At the end of the council, awarded Glenn Davidson Associates as the broker, um, for the RFP for a three-year term. That was about eight months ago. We are now several months after this council's decision upon our first renewal cycle. I guess this is where, uh, my point starts. As I would expect, we would start the process on the renewal months out. Uh, your brokers should gather data, uh, meet with the staff, get current information, uh, get the account out to market, and get the numbers back to, just for the best possible outcome of the city. This is where things for Glenn Davis got real strange. Glenn Davis was instructed, uh, instructed without any confusion in my mind and directly that they could not take part in the procurement, the shopping, the negotiation of the city's quotes for this year's renewal. The sole objective by this, and I think this is our word in the group, uh, was to get unadulterated numbers from the marketplace. Did not want a broker involved, wanted the numbers to come straight from the carriers. So the city prepared the RFP and directly distributed it to the markets that the leadership picked, utilizing Glenn Davis' only for contact information to know where to send it. When the RFP for insurance was developed, uh, we were given a Friday afternoon to have it back Monday morning with any changes or advice that we could do to help in the RFP process. At this point, leadership was told, uh, has told Glenn Davis they cannot trust us, but require our industry contacts and specific RFP knowledge for the process. After squalling a lot of pride and focusing on the end objective, which is getting the best solution for the city, we worked all weekend trying to flesh out the suggestions, uh, to fix the RFP. This deadline was obviously an obstacle. After that submission by us on Monday, um, it took me a couple of times to get out of algebra, but less than ten percent of the corrections were utilized by the city to change the RFP. Even after this, we requested another meeting, strongly suggesting the city correct the RFP, but the work was given, send the RFP out. There was immediate confusion with many of the markets such as United Healthcare and Edna withdrew from the whole process. They said, we're not doing it. Even though the RFP requests were specifically sent out to carriers, our own provider of twelve years, IBG and TBR, had no idea what was going on. This debacle led to two-thirds of our industry not even quoting the account, which in my mind was a failure, a lot to start. The RFP had no references to broker services, and I've got to say, I'm going to stop right here, I'm going to check myself. I have not seen Shaw Hankins. Not that I agree with them, strongly disagree with them, I haven't seen them do anything wrong. Shaw Hankins, everything went to the competing broker, which was sent a package. So now Glenn Davis, as the broker, was forbidden to quote or even get involved, but this other broker was instructed to quote as a broker. Obviously confused, I requested a meeting, and it was reassured that it was not the intent, and they could not help what Shaw Hankins was doing. All the time sending down to Glenn Davis, TBR, IBG, request after request after request for information that they needed to quote as the agent, broker, and to get it to the marketplace, which is what a broker does. Obviously confused, but taking Mr. Whitmore's word in front of the whole committee, we continue to support this very strange information request. At the point, I readdressed Mr. Whitmore, what I consider to be the obvious intent in letting a broker submit, obviously, to get another broker involved, as we were the three-year awarded broker by this council. During this meeting, Mr. Whitmore became agitated, he used some aggressive tone, he used some words I won't use in here, and stormed out of the meeting. He came back about ten or fifteen minutes later and agreed with Darren that we would issue a letter of clarification, an amendment to the RFP release now, that this was for direct companies and was not requesting broker services. Broker services would not be part of the process, and suggested that Glenn Davis sit on, and, and then he selected, suggested that Glenn Davis sit on the selection committee. That's kind of odd. Again, due to the irregularity of all this, uh, the brokers involved, there was another broker in Statesboro, Georgia, bowed out, was actually said, hey, there's no need for you to do it. We're not looking at brokers, a local agent here, not myself. Again, this back and forth caused two-thirds of the health insurance marketplace not even to issue quotes. Summarizing the next months, as Darren put, three or four months into this, summarizing the next months of events, dozens of hours of wired information gathered from Glenn Davis, TBR, IBG, many last-minute phone calls, all these people sharing after hours, please, couple of them. And a date extension for the preparers, it was finally RFP day. By the way, I cannot speak highly enough of the employees of the insurance committee, these employees are certainly dedicated and concern servants and citizens of our community. First up, Shaw Hankins bid, the brokers are allowed to serve, broker services, uh, utilizing quite front of our largest carrier that we weren't allowed to go to as your broker. Very concerned, again, I asked Mr. Whitmore in the meeting, this, why, why is this being allowed to continue? Ironically, I saw it as a completely unprofessional harassment of Shaw Hankins, if this is what we were truly doing. He smiled, shrugged his shoulders, and said, it won't hurt to listen. Again, I had been strategically placed on the selection committee. We continued to support the effort after, after quotes came in, and after those quotes came in, services were no longer needed really by Glenn Davis, so communication slowed down a little bit. We did have approximately, I would say, one and a half meetings, they were very rushed, everybody's been very busy. Uh, there was some personnel issues that popped up on today's, which are very understandable. Which not everybody attended all the meetings every time. After the meeting, we attempted to show the staff fact from fiction, uh, we, we went through math and math and math, a lot smarter math guys in some aspects than me. The bid sheets were then sent back. Not everybody projected the same amount of losses, um, so there was an order to send the bid sheets back and let everybody bid on different numbers after the original RFP numbers came out. So after that, um, I actually was not invited back to any more meetings, um, and was told that the next event was going to be another sales presentation, and I'm using that word specifically, in front of you gentlemen, um, a few days later. After that presentation, I was sparsely and best communicated with, and was taken out of any consideration. I sat on this committee for three months, but when it got time to make a decision, I was not asked to come back to that committee. I don't know why. Then apparently, a broker selection was made, when for three months we were reinsured and the intent and a amendment to the RFP, um, was sent out. Very, very confusing to the industry, your current broker, and everybody else. When in fact, your broker, Glenn Davis, had been denied to have any ability to do our appointed job. We couldn't bid your insurance, we were told we couldn't, and quite honestly, we were placed in a place that we had to evaluate our competitor and not compete. It doesn't work. I'll let you figure out the intent of how that all played out. I could never believe this process would be condoned by this mayor and this council. To act in this way, especially to two local businesses, that have been here to support the city for many years, I find very, very discouraging. I could go on for a lot of reasons, uh, but I'm not, uh, I'm just going to skip through. I do have a couple of facts that I do want to throw out there as I see them, and, and I think the council should know for future planning, for understanding what you've signed up for, just, just to know. These are all bullet points that I believe to be true, and I believe the council really needs to grasp. Glenn Davis, as your partner, so Georgia, represents Blue Cross Blue Shield Anthem on a national basis. We place six hundred and forty-four million dollars worth of premium with Blue Cross Blue Shield. I think we're qualified enough to be your broker and have gone as your appointed broker for three years and do that. By the way, Blue Cross Blue Shield, your region here, already recognized Glenn Davis as the broker. There was some questions about the IBG, the IBG has over seventy hospitals under contract. They have over three thousand physicians directly under contract in Georgia, South Carolina, and Florida, to include Mayo, Emory, MCG, Augusta University. TBR has two national wraparound agreements. There was some question, hey, if I'm in Alabama or I'm in Texas and I get sick, what's, what's going on? You have two national wraparound agreements, just like Blue Cross has a national network that supports your current IBG. I believe TBR and IBG submitted in compliance, representing pure industry numbers. I think the RFP was not a broker's RFP. The comparative analysis prepared tremendous, I can tell you tremendous amount of time. There is some industry-specific things that there would be no way for that group without anybody in the industry to understand was there. That analysis may not make a difference, but it's about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars wrong. Again, I don't know that three people, four people in this room that would even know where to look for that money, that's what we do. In the analysis, Shaw Hankins using Blue Cross Blue Shield, their projected payout, uh, of claims for the city of Statesboro was over a million dollars more than the actual claims incurred by the city of Statesboro this year projected by TBR. They took our real numbers for ten months, turned them into twelve months, that's about as close and accurate as you can get. There would be no reason to think that over a million dollars of additional claims would happen next year. I think the lack of understanding of the shining star of our community, our, our, um, uh, excuse me, I apologize, uh, our clinic has driven claims now. I don't think that was taken into account, I think you can see it on the charts, where claims have come down and steady off. I, I, I just, I did not have a chance to express that, obviously. I want you guys to know that. Gentlemen, excuse me. Immigrants that you have, they are projected expenses for the year. The only thing in a partially self-funded plan that you can bet on, the only thing any of us can guarantee, are the fixed costs. The fixed costs are. The fixed costs are extremely different. Blue Cross Blue Shield has a 2% cost share payback, meaning they want 2% back of every dollar that they save you on their network. On 6.6 million dollars, that's a lot of money, I don't think that was looked at. I think the biggest issue I have is with the RX plan. If we get down to what ifs, what ifs, what ifs, there's about $180,000 difference between the two quotes. What ifs, what ifs, what ifs. The big kicker is the fixed costs and the RX, the drugs. Last year, this current year, you're on track to spend a little over $700,000 drug costs. This new RX vendor is projected that they will accomplish this for $300,000 for the whole year. You have two employees that have two lifesaving drugs that are over $275,000 a year. There is no generic for those drugs, there is no replacement for those drugs, and there's nowhere else to buy them. There's only two choices, pay for the drugs, the other choice is deny those employees those lifesaving drugs. That leaves, depending on my math, because there's a little variance, I'll admit that, there's $75,000 to $25,000 left over to run the entire drug program for the city of Statesboro for the next year. I don't think any one of us, after crunching those numbers, would bet on that. I'm very concerned about that. I hope there's a plan out there that, in consulting for you, that I can see happens. I don't know how to make that happen. Maybe those drugs, maybe those particular circumstances, were not known about by that vendor when that was proposed, I'm not sure. There is no doubt, in our fixed cost, we're going to have roughly $381,927 more spent by the city of Statesboro in fixed cost, not those costs, and I just can't deal with. If there's savings to be had, and we don't spend the money on those employees that need those drugs, that's $381,000 more in fixed cost. I don't know who's going to pay for that. There's two choices, because all the savings will happen day one. If they're, if they're like, it's got to go either to the city, or you're going to have to raise employees deductions for their health insurance. I can tell you, if you take $380,000 divided by the number of employees, it ain't going to be a new Christmas. That may have been considered, I don't know, again, I was not there to talk about it. We have probably no more than a week to accomplish the hard plans for your open enrollment for this year. The proposal on the table, I believe, is to use B-Swift by the new broker. I do want to put this out there for the betterment and ease of the city, they may not know this, I'm here as a consultant at this point. As of two months ago, B-Swift did not interface with your payment system. Maybe that changed, I don't know. I just want to say, as being your voted-on broker of record, your agent, for three years, eight months into my term, I just felt like I needed to be heard, my opinions, my guidance, and how things happened in the chain of events. Thank you very much, and I will continue to work as hard as I can to see, and I take you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Do you have other further comments? All right. Seeing that there's none, consideration for motions to be actual executive sessions to discuss. First, they'll have us real estate and potential allocation in accordance with OCG name, 50-14-3B. Is there a motion to go into a second session? All of them favor?
All right.
All right. Do you have a lot for, I'm seeing that recess? Thank you. You see?